I've heard that.
Yeah, she's real big radio.
Just like, I'd just like to say your positive energy, excitement for what you're doing is really refreshing, and I appreciate you bringing that energy to that, to that organization, so we're really pleased.
Well, thank you. I love my job. I love going to work everything. All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have, and I apologize with these masks on, sometimes I don't recognize people, but I know you, but I don't recognize you. So if I don't, I'm not being stuck up, I just, I haven't, anyway, Susan Fields.
It is a challenge for all of us. I'm Suzy Fields, located at 412 Kelly Hill Road in Atkins, and I'm stopping by as well to give an update and wanted to thank you all for your financial support. I'm with Smith Animal Rescue, and we were founded in 2019. My husband and I co-founded it, Dave. And we're primarily a transport and transfer rescue, which means that we rescue animals from the Smith County Animal Shelter. We do as much vetting as we can, we provide temporary housing for them, and we rent a transport to Northern Virginia once or twice a week to our partner rescues, and they're able to find them really good homes and get them all placed. And it's been a wonderful process. We've learned a lot, but have been very, very successful over the last couple of years. And we're continuing to work as hard as we can to save as many as we can. We have a great relationship and work very closely with the Smith County Animal Shelter and Animal Control. We're at the shelter at least two or three days a week, taking pictures of the animals, meeting them, getting them posted on the internet, and pitching them to our partners. When we started the rest of the year, our primary mission was and continues to be to lower the euthanasia rate at the county shelter. It's not good for anybody, it's hard on animal control, it's not good for the animals or the community, and I'm very happy to say that in 2018, unfortunately, the euthanasia rate was 42%. Almost half the animals that went into the shelter did not make it out. And year-to-date, as of end of September, our current euthanasia rate is only 15%, which is a tremendous improvement. We've taken in 753 animals so far this year. Last year, we did about 800, so probably we're on track to do about the same numbers we did last year. And we just really appreciate your financial support, we appreciate your faith in us, and using your dollars wisely. And want to continue, we have a tremendous group of volunteers that work every day, taking care of the animals, building really good relationships with the Virginia Federation of Humane Societies and our partner rescues in Alexandria, Arlington, Richmond, Fairfax, Fredericksburg. That's where we head every week, and just really appreciate your support. And I'm also happy to answer any questions you have. We have new little information cards. We're working really hard to be very community-centric group, so we're constantly taking phone calls from the public. We not only help with the shelter animals, we help with if they have emergency expenses for their pets. We're really trying to keep pets at home with their people, so we'll help us pay neuter costs, we help with pet food. These are a couple of our information cards, kind of like to have one of those. Do I have any questions I can answer for you? Appreciate your time.
Any questions?
Thank you for what you do.
You're very welcome. We also love what we do every day. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had a personal contact from Suzy's agency. I cannot commend you enough.
Thank you.
To hear the statistics of how that rate has dropped as far as having to euthanize animals is just amazing. I think every dollar that goes there is well, well managed and well spent.
Thank you.
And thank you for the services you provide for our community, because there are a lot of animal needs, and it really is a blessing to us.
Thank you. And we really do try to help the people and their pets.
Yes.
And it does help the whole community, so thank you, Judy.
Any other questions? I'd just like to say thank you for the, from the animals, because I know the ones that get saved is precious. Plus, everyone you save saves us the euthanasia cost and
Yes, sir.
Having used to order those drugs when I worked here, they, they are not cheap. And so I appreciate the fact that we not having to do that and the animals get to go to loving homes.
Thank you for recognizing that, it's an excellent point, absolutely. Super, thank you all very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Watson.
Charles Watson, Watson Circle, Marion, Virginia. I'd like to thank Suzy for the work in helping animals. I don't know if y'all are aware, or she's aware, of what goes on in animal experimentation sponsored by NIH or the NIAID, Dr. Fauci. They have done some of the most cruel, inhumane animal experiments that ought to stop. And I just hope these animals that they rescue don't end up in some scientific lab where they are absolutely tortured. It's horrendous, it really is. Are you familiar with that, what goes on in that?
Animal testing, certainly, and there's tremendous efforts to stop that, as well as the Virginia Federation of Humane Society has partnered with a number of businesses and things to rescue experimented animals and to stop it.
Well, that's great.
We have a very close relationship with our partners to make sure that they're going to good homes. Yeah, because it's certainly a concern.
I belong to, it's Physicians' Responsibility for, Physicians' Association for Responsible Medicine. It's a group out of DC that goes around the universities just to stop experimentation on animals by people in training. And they do a very good job. The other side of that coin is go vegan, go vegan, so think on that. Anyway, one thing I'd like to reiterate is our rights come from God, and they're protected by the Constitution. There are many people in Washington and states across the United States that don't recognize that, don't recognize God, and say their rights come from them. As Mousey Tong, Lennon, and others said, "Power comes out of the barrel of a gun." And there are people in our country this day that that's what they believe. But we believe power comes from we, the people. That's part one. Part two is recently, I watched a talk by a Dr. Peter McCullough, who is probably the world expert on COVID-19, COVID vaccinations, COVID research, anything to do with it. He spent the last two years in this work. And at this talk before the American Association of Physicians and Surgeons, there were a number of doctors that spoke. One was Dr. Robert Malone, who was the inventor of the mRNA technology. And I just wanted to read a couple of, a couple of items. "Dr. Robert Malone, the architect of mRNA platform used by Pfizer in Rendell vaccines, and organizing cosigner of a recent public declaration in defense of early treatment." There are treatments. From the beginning of the presentation tweeted, "I'll say it again, watch the speech from Dr. McCullough, he is on fire, he's spot on. His summary of the data are precise and detailed. Please take the time to watch the video." The, one of the main points of Dr. McCullough's speech was, "COVID expert Dr. Peter McCullough urges unbreakable resistance to vaccine for kids. Kids handle the infection very well, they do not need a vaccine." A person who's had COVID does not need a vaccine. Natural immunity has been proven in hundreds of studies. And your common sense tells you, God gives you natural immunity to most diseases. The last thing I'd like to read is "American pharmaceutical giant Pfizer and its subsidiary," this is widely available on the Department of Justice website and other places. "American pharmaceutical giant Pfizer and its subsidiary Pharmacia and Upton have agreed to pay $2.3 billion, the largest healthcare fraud settlement in the history of the Department of Justice, to resolve criminal and civil liability arising from the illegal promotion of certain pharmaceutical products, the Justice Department announced today." That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Your time's that perfect, I was getting ready to tell you 30 seconds, so. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the room that didn't sign up that wants to speak? Got a captive audience here if you want to say something. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. You want to back our agenda now? Minutes of the previous meeting, and hopefully everyone's read the October 22nd and October, October 28th meeting minutes. Do we have any corrections, or do I have a motion to accept as presented to us?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we do these separately, because I wasn't in attendance at one of the meetings.
Okay, let's go with the October 12th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the October 12th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Likewise.
Abstain.
Okay. Five, oh, five oh and
Five one one.
I guess it'd be five one one. No, it's not a they.
No, it's one absent.
Yeah, one absent. All right, we'll go to the October 28th meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve that one? Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And one abstention. Okay. Presentations. Amanda Lewinsky with Smith County Tourism, it's going to present some information.
Thank you.
We have, do you think we can skip the hearing?
Are we, did we skip around?
Yeah, I guess we ought to do the public hearing. I skipped right over that. All righty, public hearing, proposed personal property tax exemption on farm equipment. It's got my name next to it, but I'm sure, I'm sure that the county administrators won't discuss it.
I'll go ahead and read the, the advertisement. We went ahead and advertised both as under one advertisement, so I'm going to read both of them together, and we can just do the public hearing separately. Notice the public hearing in compliance with the Code of Virginia and amendments thereto. The Smith County Board of Supervisors will conduct public hearings to hear public comment on the following proposed ordinance amendment and proposed ordinance. One, proposed amendment to the Smith County, Virginia Code, Section 23-44.1, titled "Exemption of Certain Animals and Items for Taxation," to add exemptions for farming equipment. And public hearing number two, for a proposed ordinance to create a regional industrial facility authority for Pathway Park with initial members being Smith County, Virginia, and Blaine County, Virginia. These public hearings will be held on Wednesday, November 10th, 2021, beginning at 5:00 PM or soon thereafter, in the boardroom of the Smith County Office Building, 121 Bagley Circle, Marion, Virginia, to receive comments on the proposed amendment and proposed ordinance. All persons, interested persons may express their views by emailing s@smithcounty.org prior to the scheduled public hearing. Written comments may also be mailed or delivered to the county administrator, 121 Bagley Circle, Suite 100, Marion, Virginia, 24354, or by fax to 276-783-9314. All emails, written comments, and faxes must be received by 2:00 PM on Thursday, November 4th, 2021. A copy of each proposed ordinance is on file with the county administrator's office located at 121 Bagley Circle, Marion, Virginia, or online at www.smithcounty.org for public review. In compliance with the provisions of Americans with Disabilities Act, persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in this public hearing should contact Craig Williams, ADA Coordinator, at 276-706-8315, at least 24 hours prior to the public hearing. By order of the Smith County Board of Supervisors, Sean at County Minister. So I don't know if you want to have a, a reading of the rules of public hearing, or wish to
Okay, a motion to not read the rules?
Second.
Have a couple of seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No rules.
Okay.
Well, we got rules, but we're not reading.
Right. So the, the first public hearing tonight is, is related to the personal property tax exemption. You may remember a month or so ago, two, two months ago, that we brought to your attention that in 2010, the board supervisors had the expectation that they eliminated or provided for the exemption of farm equipment on personal property tax, and since then, the Commissioner of Revenue hasn't been charging that. However, it was not followed up with an actual amendment to the ordinance, so that's why we're doing the public hearing tonight. So I'll sit down in case someone wants to speak to the public.
Anybody wishing to speak on this? Anyone sign up? I don't think so. I have a question, though, that's come up. Now, that, we really need Mr. Richardson here. We really need Mr. Richardson here, and I'm asking him this question, though, and I wasn't satisfied with the answer. On page 31 of our agenda, we have the amendment to the Smith County Code of Ordinances. And under 11, it says privately owned trailers, as defined in 46.2100, that are primarily used by farmers in their farming operations for the transportation of farm animals or other farm products, as enumerated in subdivision 1 through 7. Then we have in number 12, motor vehicles that are used primarily for agriculture purposes, for which the owner is not required to obtain a registration certificate. My question is, and me being a farmer, and me hauling cattle, I have a cattle trailer. I have a permanent plate on that cattle trailer. He charges me tax on that. I would think it would fall under that 11 there. Why does it not?
It's currently not in ordinance yet. I mean, it's not on the books. Now, why he's taxing you is probably because they get a DMV roll, and they do the tax ticket off the DMV roll. And then I think the citizen needs to go in and say, wait a minute, this is a cattle trailer, primarily for farm purposes, it should be exempt.
I'm doing that, that don't work.
And the commissioner should take it off the list.
You go, farm use tags on it, it won't be on that.
Also, I was going to say, charge the tax back into DMV, take off the roll, he won't see it, he won't charge you and stick farm.
But then I go in North Carolina, I've pushed that tag on it.
You don't even go North Carolina, if you go out of Smith County into Tennessee, you got to have tags.
That's what I mean.
I don't know what's, what's, charge as easy as it goes, and they don't, what can we do to fix that?
Well, I think you just need to have a conversation with the commissioner's office, or whoever set, I think the commissioner sets what gets taxed, and then it goes to the treasurer, and the treasurer taxes it, right? The commissioner pulls the records from the DMV, so anything registered shows up on my tax ticket, right? As being a vehicle, trailer, whatever. And all you see is a fed bike trailer, it doesn't say what it is, right? I'm not sure what the description is from the DMV, whatever's on the title. There has, I would think, and I don't know for sure, there'd be some kind of process there in the commissioner's office for the citizen to say, this is a cattle trailer, you want me to bring you a picture, you want to come out and look at it? And then the commissioner makes the call, right? I think that's how it should work. I need to check the code, but I think that's how it should work.
Okay, I am for, for the addition, but I just want, I think that needs to be clarified, because there's several of us in the county that's got, I mean, it's not a significant amount, but everything else is exempted except that.
I will say that if
Well, I'm in the same, I'm in the same boat.
Yeah.
You can't run the farm tag if you cross the state line, but it is a farm vehicle.
I will say that if, if the board does approve the ordinance amendment, it'll be an easier conversation after, after tonight for that, so you actually have something on the books.
You're saying we can approve it in the state it's in, and then discuss that later?
Yes. All right, anybody else wanting to, any comment, any questions, anybody? Hearing none, I'll close this portion of the public hearing and go on to the second.
Thanks, sir. The second public hearing is, is a public hearing related to the Regional Industrial Facilities Authority. I'm happy to report that not only is it proposed for Smith County and Blaine County, but Washington County has also expressed a strong interest to participate. They're working through some things. They, they hope to have their public hearing in December. So as any, any kind of action that we take, I think it would be good to go ahead and keep them in mind in, in our, in our processes. But you have a copy of the draft ordinance in your packet. I've also provided two, two draft agreements. One is the creation of the authority itself, and one is the participation agreement that's required that spells out the tax revenue sharing. Adding in a third locality, we're basically proposing, after the, Smith County gets their, the host fee, the 10% host fee will split the remaining funds evenly, revenues evenly. We'll also, at the same time, evenly split the expenses. So we'll, we'll be paying 40, or 33% of the expenses, but receiving 40% of the revenues as, as the way the, the numbers fall out. But we do have everything that was advertised as required, and in case anybody needs, I'll sit down if there's any, unless there's any questions by the board.
Anyone wishing to speak on this? Scene done. Thank you. I appreciate that. Oh, Mr. Chairman, thank your opportunity. I don't know all the details of this, but anything that would help move the market, the property, the Town Show HB4, I've just came here, I saw the notice to listen and observe, but do appreciate, if this, maybe get some infrastructure money, grant money, that helps, I'm sure the Town Show HB4. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have one more thing. Tomorrow, Town Show HB is holding a Veterans Day ceremony. Morgan Griffith will be there, and Brian Martin, Town Manager of Sog, will be the keynote speakers, and you all can come. Anyone in the audience, we'd love to have you. Thank you. What time? 11 o'clock. All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none, I'll close this part of the public hearing.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you may.
I just want to speak from an economic development standpoint, I'm sure Sean and Kendrick can agree with me on this. Any partnership that we can do like this, we need to take advantage of it, because grants like the Virginia and the Tobacco Commission, they are looking for partnerships like this. And this is how we get funding to expand the infrastructure and do all the things to make the site ready, because projects are happening quickly, these companies are looking for sites that are ready. They don't want to wait months and months for A, B, and C to happen. So I think this is really important for us to move forward.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on the proposed personal property tax exemption to waive the rules of waiting and vote on that tonight.
Okay, we have a motion to waive the rules and vote on the, the farm personal property tax. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, we're going to vote, the motion is to waive the rules. All in favor of waiving rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Likewise. Sounds like it passed unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented on the farm machinery and the ordinance we have.
All righty, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Likewise. Sounds like we have an ordinance. I'd like to make sure that gets filed this time.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we do the same thing for item number two?
I second.
All righty, we have a motion to waive the rules.
Yes.
I guess we're voting on waiving the rules again.
Motion to waive the rules for the
Okay, motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Likewise.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Likewise. All righty. That way they can get that moving forward, but that'd have to wait another two weeks. That's really important. Now, if y'all will let me, we will move to the presentation from tourism.
How old is Tom?
I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you for having me. I will try to keep this as brief as possible, but please ask questions, because all this federal relief funding gets real complicated real quickly. Smith County is eligible for federal tourism recovery funds allocated by the Virginia Legislature and flowing through Virginia Tourism. The available funds have been allocated across all 133 Virginia counties and independent cities based on the relative share of each locality to total state tax revenue attributable to tourism in 2019. All that is to say, I did the math, and Smith County's allocation will be about $39,000. And this money is to be used for tourism, but it will flow through the county. And that is why I'm here today to speak to you. Smith County Tourism Association is what they call a destination marketing organization. The way they've set up these funds, the destination marketing organization shall implement the program to build, you know, tourism recovery funds, but they must work with the county to apply for the funds and receive them. So I've included a timeline in your packet and a little bit more information, but the request actually today is actually fairly simple. The Tourism Association would like to request that the county amend the current operating budget in order to be able to receive approximately half of the funds in the current fiscal year. And that comes to be somewhere around $19,542. There is an application portal, the county will have to be the applicant, and in the guidelines, it states that the county shall work with the DMO to prepare the application and decide how the funds are spent. So I have also included a secondary request, if it's amenable to Sean and his team, and I think it is, that the Tourism Association be added as a secondary applicant, which will allow me to assist them with, with the application.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? I, this sounds awful, because I'm chairman of that tourism board, but, you know, I just, I would like for us to delay approving it, and we still want to vote on it, because the motion's there. I would like to see us delay it until Sean has, and the Budget Committee has a chance to go through and make the, so we're looking at exactly what we're doing budget-wise. We meet again next Thursday night, so.
This is just to receive the money, right?
Uh, yeah, so the
This is just authorizing the, the application for
If that's how we're going, I don't have a problem, but I thought you said amend the budget.
Well, that, that
Motion to just move to approve the application for the hearing.
Okay.
And we can, we can move the motion in at a later
At a later date, okay.
Don't mean to be, no, I agree with you.
Sure, sure. So then the, the motion would be to then allow the application and then deal with the budget, okay.
That won't mess up any deadlines or anything?
No, no. The, so that the timeline is, if, it is a rolling deadline, but I like to move with haste. So if we apply by December 31st, we would receive the initial payment as early as January 2022. However, we don't have to apply by December 31st, we can delay.
We should do it by the end of November.
Okay.
Okay.
I just don't want to mess up anything.
Yeah.
I'm the same way, I don't want to. That's why I said it sounds awful. I'm chairman of the board here, I am
I appreciate your want to, want to do it right the first time.
All right, we have a motion to approve the application. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? I'll shut up. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Likewise. Sounds like it passed.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Financial report, Mrs. Richardson will provide most recent finances for the board's review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You should have there, at your desk, the regular monthly reports, I'll begin with the revenue summary. This is through October 31st. Again, it's broken down by fund. If you go to the back page, you'll find a total for all funds. Revenue collected as far as the current amount was $7,640,237.27, with a year-to-date total of $26,415,442.30, with a remaining balance of $73,710,780.70. I will bring to your attention the appropriated amount of $101,26,223. That's our new budgeted amount as far as revenue and expenditures. If you go to the next report, it's the expenditure summary, again, it's through November 31st, broken down by fund. If you go to the final page, you have a total for all funds. If you'll note on there, the appropriation amount is off by like $14. Dr. Ratliff pointed that out a couple of months ago. We are, we got that issue resolved today, so that amount is, is currently agrees with the revenue side, which is $101,126,223. So we did get that issue corrected, so your next month report should be correct. The current expenditure amount is $7,754,635.47. Year-to-date is $24,663,493.99, leaving a balance of $75,467.743.1. and forty-three dollars and one cent, left in the budget on the expenditure summary, uh, summary side. The next report there you have is the county expenses and appropriations from the Treasurer's Office. This is through October, uh, thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. The ending bank and CD balance is ten million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. And according to the, um, Treasurer, that's about a million and a half dollars ahead of where we were last year at this same time. Uh, the radar fund is currently at one hundred thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. And if you'll, the CD balances are below that, the appropriations amounts are to the, to the right.
Uh, I will make a quick note on the radar fund. We did find that we, um, we've, during the budget process, we moved the SROs from the radar fund up to the general fund. However, the, uh, we've still been charging those salaries, so we'll make an adjustment this month. So next month, that probably go up to around two hundred thousand dollars, um, to be able to account for those, those salaries and, and benefits.
The next page you have is the, uh, the water sewer fund and the uncollected county taxes. First, uh, water and sewer. There is, um, outstanding balance as of October twenty-twenty-one, two million, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-six cents. Um, as far as uncollected taxes, I'm sorry, meant to pair that to last year, see where we stood. Um, as far as uncollected county taxes, uh, through twenty-twenty, there's an uncollected, uh, through October twenty-twenty-one, a three million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and seventy cents. And then for, uh, tax year twenty-twenty-one, there's an uncollected balance of sixteen million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-five cents. And then along with that, you'll have the Treasurer's Office, Treasurer's Accountability Report. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Who's going to entertain a question regarding the Treasurer's Accountability Report?
We can entertain and follow up with the Treasurer, for sure.
Oh, I have a question regarding the, uh, up in the Treasury, up in the current assets. CARES coronavirus relief. We're showing two million, nine twenty-three, eight forty-four. Have we spent all that already?
So, we really need to re-able that, 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 that two point nine million, that's our ARPA funds that we received in May. Um, and we use the same fund, Fund Seven, Seven Five. We had, we had expended all of the CARES Act funds prior to the ARPA money coming in, but that's, that's, that's what that.
So that's not a silly question then. I just thought, has it been replenished or what? I mean, okay.
We call that ARPA money now.
Okay, good. Uh, any other questions on these financial statements? Hearing none, we'll move on to approving the accounts payable. You've got a list of the checks in with your packet. Everybody had a chance to look over and see who's spending their money where. Any questions?
I can approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Do we need a break?
No.
Okay.
Um, whole business. Committee and grounds committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Building and Grounds Committee met on Wednesday, November third, at ten-thirty, in attendance, myself and Mr. Sturgill, uh, and also Staff members, Mr. Ut, Ms. Harvey. The, I, first item on the agenda that we discussed was the Smith County Public Library Elevator. Uh, as you all know, there's been ongoing issues with it and repairs that need to be done. Um, so, right now, the jack seat, which consists of several hundred pounds of sand, twenty to thirty feet deep, will need to be replaced as well. Uh, we noted this from our last discussion about this, that it may or may not be replaced. Uh, unfortunately, it is going to have to be replaced. The contractor currently working on the project provided a quote of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to complete the necessary work. Uh, with this being a critical issue since the work must be completed prior to proceeding with further repairs, um, the library has, um, come to us to, to ask for assistance with that. So, um, I would like to ask, I don't know if this is appropriate, but in that motion, uh, that was made, there was a, the certain amount that we said, and the discussion was that the library may come up with that other part. I don't know if the discussion was had in the can or not, so do you want me to read what the motion is and then discuss it, or?
We'll probably have to, uh, address this emotion.
Okay.
You can come back with a second motion and fix.
Okay. All right, so after we discuss the options from where we get the funding, the good news is the elevator in this building, uh, did not need, uh, repair or replacement like we had thought, um, in one of the line, line items from the capital improvement plan. Um, so that was three thousand, or excuse me, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. That will not be needed at this point. Um, so after discussion, Mr. Sturgill made a motion to recommend the approval of ten thousand dollars for the public, uh, Smith County Public Library to go towards the jack seat repair change order for the elevator with the understanding that the funds will be pulled from the capital improvement plan more than elevator line item, and that the remaining required funds to be covered by the library. And I second that motion.
Okay, we have a, uh, we have a motion and a second. I think we have a motion, committee recommendation, which is a motion. And, uh, discussion?
Do we get the town to pay any of this?
The, the town is, they put some money into the additional, um, elevator repairs. I haven't talked to them specifically about the, the additional fifteen thousand.
I asked the question about the funding, because I know, like, the town of Saltville and the town of Chilhawee, they kind of do it as they go. The town of Marion actually has, like, the library in their budget, so they give toward that, and then we can pull from that, if that makes sense. So, they give theirs upfront.
Did they give their full amount this year?
Yes, sir. They, they have funded their normal contribution. They did provide five thousand. When I came, when we came here originally, several months ago, and asked for the first repair, they contributed five thousand. They did pay that right away.
The town of Saltville, they need a roof on there, they had to pay it themselves. You know, I just, I don't know. It's okay. We got, we got something on that. Marion should take care of it. So this is on top of what we already give them?
Yeah, because it's our, it's our building.
Yeah, I got that, but we perpated some money to work on the elevator not long ago.
Right, so then we appropriated that. That was without having to replace that jack seat, because they weren't sure if they were going to have to replace it or not. And then once they got in there to do the repairs, it was determined that it is going to have to be replaced.
One, one thing that was included in all three of the estimates, and Ms. Liggins can can attest, um, maybe speak to this better, but all three estimates basically said, had this contingency because they couldn't get to the jack seat without removing the elevator
Right.
from the shaft, to stuff, or the car from the shaft.
They all said that if they found stuff in the shaft that had to be removed, that that would be an additional charge. Every one of our bidders had that clause in their bid. And so, it's not, I guess it's not, it doesn't always happen, but it sometimes happens, which is why they put it in their bid. So, it was a possibility, and when they pulled out the old jack and removed it, all that sand collapsed. And they can't seat the new jack with those hundreds of pounds of sand at the bottom of the shaft. So they got to pull it out.
And the town of Marion gave five thousand dollars on the first repair?
Yes, sir.
Do we need to go back and ask the people what that info is, or do you feel we want to go with what it is?
I think we need to, it, with the library experienced a good year and people using it, I think the longer we drag on this library, two things. One, the price is going to go up because everything is going up and down. Our church dragged our feet for about two months, and the cost of the, uh, air conditioning system went about twenty-two percent. So, I'm afraid labor on this will go up if we drag our feet. And two, we just need to have it so the library sta, patrons can go from floor to floor without having to go have to run around the building. Uh, we just can't use the stairs.
I would like to add on to that. It's been a year that that's been out of service. Um, we're required to have ADA compliance. And a few years ago, members of this board will remember that it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars, and a local citizen complained about some of the buildings. So, I think we're, we're nitpicking needlessly here. It's more, the higher quarter is serving the community and me in compliance.
I would like to see this vote no on this proposal from the committee, and come back with a proposal that we, we approve fifteen thousand and whatever for the library, less the amount that the library itself can provide to it. And that way, we've got to cover whichever way it goes. I think we've got reasonable people doing this, and we're not going to get gouged. We're going to get it done. Does that make sense to everyone? Maybe I'm Pollyanna on this, but I think people need to work with one another, and this is my way of saying let's work with one another and get it done.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I asked the question, because I know when we discussed it, it was that it was possible the library had been able to cover it, but that's not the case now, so.
Um, how much?
I, I could do two thousand. I'm going to scrape two thousand out of other budget items, but my budget isn't very bad.
So approve them, I recommend, approve them at thirteen seventy.
I'm good with that. I don't think trying to get muddy in other places is nitpicking. I think it's good business. So, but, you know, I, I understand we need to get it fixed.
Yep.
Okay, so we want to vote no on this motion.
Yeah, so the force right now is a motion in our packet. Any further discussion on that motion? If hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed likewise? Aye, I oppose. You oppose it or for it?
What, waiting, or putting it in where the library cover what they could?
Yeah.
Vote no on this first.
Okay, no on the first one. I think that's unanimous.
Yes, I vote no.
All righty, now entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we approve thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for Smith County Public Library to go towards the jack seat repair change order for the elevator with the understanding that the funds will be pulled from the capital improvement plan more than elevator line item, and the remaining will require funds to be covered by the library.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Motion CARES.
Thank you all for that.
Yes, thank you.
All right, uh, that was the only item on our agenda, so we adjourned at ten forty-three.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Public Safety Committee.
That's me again. If you'll turn to page one oh nine in your packet, the Public Safety Committee met on Wednesday, November third, at eleven, in attendance, myself and Mr. Sturgill, uh, Mr. Ut, Ms. Harvey, Mr. Crawford, and Mr. Williams. Also in attendance are OMD Dr. Bruso and Sheriff Deputy Keith Jackson. First item on our agenda discussion was automatic aid. Um, Curtis Crawford presented the agreement for review pending final approval from the Board of Supervisors for our automatic aid program. He advised a disciplined copy that includes the chief's input from all departments. Mr. Crawford requested for an approval vote for the county departments and to send automatic aid agreement to the town councils for their consideration. Chilhawee District Supervisor Michael Sturgill made a motion to recommend sending the draft automatic aid agreement to the Board of Supervisors and the town councils of Marion, Chilhawee, and Saltville for local approval, and I seconded that motion. So that is a committee recommendation.
So just to be clear, just to be clear, we're voting to send ourselves a notice along with the towns.
That is correct, yes. And I'm happy to expand on automatic aid if anybody has a question.
Any questions? Hearing anyone? Comments? Hearing none, voting on the proposal before us? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like that passes.
All right, next item was call numbers discussion. Uh, Mr. Crawford discussed call numbers for all county departments and discussed the following highlights. Uh, increase in emergency medical, medical services and advanced life support, uh, provided by citizens, uh, provided two citizens, I'm sorry. The majority of the departments have also seen an increase of up to thirty percent, with the members, uh, meeting the challenge of the increase, but added the need for help. As prevalent, Mr. Williams provided a commentary regarding a state code requirement related to junior firefighter programs that is geared toward mitigating child labor concerns. Um, after that discussion, Chilhawee District Supervisor Mike Sturgill made a motion to recommend the ordinance committee review the need for an ordinance regarding junior firefighter programs throughout the county. I seconded that motion. That is a committee recommendation.
All right, any further discussion?
So, the motion is for an ordinance committee to review it, but, all right.
All right, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it's important, because the committee's got some work to do.
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, the next item we discussed was training. Uh, Mr. Crawford discussed active shooter training for FEMA. That was actually held today. Uh, Dr. Bruso said he approves of these trainings and feels it could help save someone's life in worst-case scenario. Uh, basically, that's not only training, uh, law enforcement officers, uh, but also EMS and, and fire. So everybody on the scene know what's going on in an active shooter situation, which hopefully we will never experience. Next item just, uh, that we discussed is emergency medical dispatch. Uh, Mr. Williams advised that ninety percent of the county dispatchers have completed their required EMD training course, and added that the last training, we're requiring interactive training before going live. Uh, Mr. Williams said the go-live date will be around the last week of December. Uh, we are required to have that in place by January, so I'm happy to report that we are ahead of schedule on that. Um, and Mr. Williams and Dr. Bruso will be working with the dispatchers, of course, to do the interactive training. So, hopefully, they'll, they'll be able to have some practice before they actually have a first call come in, and it won't be a shock to them when, when they answer a call. Uh, radio feasibility study was our last, uh, item of discussion. Mr. Williams advised that the radio feasibility study is still a work in progress, and that ultimately, the study will come down to pricing of the radio system chosen. We continued discussion regarding the cost of the radio equipment, possible roadblocks ahead. Um, Mr. Ut noted that the study should include various options to choose from with the base plan, including ninety-five percent radio coverage from the road, with an addition, with additional considerations for options to obtain better in-building coverage as well. So, that is the twelve million dollar expense approximately that is hovering over our heads. So just keep that in mind as we move forward. And after that discussion, we adjourned at twelve nineteen.
All right. I'd like to just make one observation, uh, on the res, radio feasibility study. I would like for people to make sure that, that, and Mr. Crawford's in the room, so I'd like to, and when we do this, make sure that the fire departments can talk to, police departments can talk to, because I know the last time we did this, we spent some money on radios, and twenty-six of them laid down there and never got used
Yes.
because they couldn't talk to one another on them. That's just, you should not use public money that way, so.
Well, just to clarify that, as we've gone through this process, we've had fire departments, EMS, we've had every police department, sheriff's department, all three towns, um, represented in this room to talk about it. Uh, and we've talked about situations, even, you know, like with the fire downtown is a good example. Um, having one channel that they can all be on and all, all talk, um, I'm pretty sure, but with all the heads in the room, we've, we've covered every scenario from a, a deputy being out in camp and not having mobile or radio contact, um, in their patrol car, to, um, you know, active shooter situation in Walmart. Like, we've covered, covered everything, so.
I just don't want to find a bunch of radios bought and not being able to use them.
Yes. We are, we are very aware of that, and, uh, we don't want to get in the situation that we are now. We're having different systems and different radios, and nobody can talk to each other. We're not, we're not doing that. So, thank you for that.
Redistricting, redistricting committee. I guess that's meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, called a meeting to order at three-thirty today. Uh, Mr. Ut reported that the county had received the twenty-twenty census data for each of the district, master districts, and provided the map of the districts with their correspondent populations. He noted that the code of January requires the county revise the boundaries if the population changes in any district is in excess of five percent, which we did not have. So we won't have to redit, redistrict them. And that was, that is not the case. We don't have to. Following the recommendation of the county attorney, Mr. Sturgill presented a recommendation for the committee to request, request the board to schedule a public hearing for the board's December fourteenth meeting at five o'clock or shortly thereafter to consider the reenactment of the county district boundaries. He provided the draft public hearing notice that was prepared by the county attorney, as well as a draft ordinance that would adopt the current district boundaries with the updated data on the population. On a motion made by North Fork District, Phil Stevens seconded by myself, the committee unanimously agreed to recommend the scheduling of a public hearing on December fourteenth at five o'clock. No further, uh, con- consideration to reenact the county election districts. to reenact the county election districts. I adjourned the meeting at three thirty-three.
Alrighty.
So it's a committee recommendation for the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
So all we're voting on is to have a public hearing? Any discussion? Hearing none? I guess the date's okay, time's okay? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it's unanimous. Our population in the county did go at under thirty thousand, did it not?
It did. I, if, I think if the prison population had remained as it was in twenty ten, we would have stayed above thirty thousand. But I think it's twenty-nine thousand eight hundred if memory serves. This hardening.
Turn our page, Jack. What are you talking about?
I think we need a recount.
I too.
Yes, put more in prison.
We don't get a count.
Then they go out.
They don't pay, that's the problem.
Don't go to prison. Let them out for a while.
So we lost a hundred and forty-five people.
Really?
Sure, let it hope. Yeah, let it hope.
Are they ever there in your salt?
Well, we bagged them here from here too, so. Alrighty, so we gonna have a public hearing? Yeah, is that, that's next Thursday, is that not correct?
No, the December regular meeting.
December regular meeting, okay.
Yes, sir.
I feel like my mic's bigger, Phil. I feel like mine in your section got even bigger.
I got more people.
On the back.
I'm on the final tier, not really.
Surplus committee, meetings earned. Who's got that?
I just made it again, Mr. Chairman.
Alrighty.
A guy called a surplus committee meeting, it ordered one forty-one P M. Mr. Ut presented a list of several vehicles, Dodge Chargers, Astro Vane, Trailblazers, one fifty Ford trucks, couple of Explorers, Cap Hill generators, some John Deere mowers, push mower, dog kennel box, and truck tanks. So I made a motion to recommend to declare all the vehicles and equipment as surplus property and to authorize the county administrator to dispose of his surplus via sealed bids. Chilhawee District Supervisor Mike Sturt seconded the motion, and it was a unanimous approval. It's a committee recommendation.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
What's wrong with the generator?
It's all torn apart. Come out of the old courthouse.
It's in about three hundred different pieces.
It's took apart. I used to even sell a generator at one.
Oh, I know.
We tried to.
I say the same thing, so we see.
Give it to the trade school, let the students take it back together.
Yeah. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed likewise?
Okay, next order, Mr. Ut presented a letter from Sugar Grove last evening regarding a requested donation of a Smith County vehicle to their fleet. He noted that the request was for a vehicle that was marked for surplus, which is means that it was seized, a drug seizure, he said.
Now, this, the one that they're, they're asking for is, is a former sheriff's deputy, sheriff's vehicle.
Oh, okay. We had one that was a drug seizure.
Yeah, we do, but that, that one has to be sold.
Yeah, it's different. Okay. Discussion ensued on, on that, Mr. Chairman. Chilhawee Supervisor Mike Sturt made a motion to recommend that the board supervise, authorize the county administrator to donate county surplus vehicles or equipment to other county agencies. I seconded a motion and it was unanimous approval. That's committee. Committee recommendation, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed likewise?
I adjourned the meeting at one forty-six, Mr. Chairman. That's all we got.
Alright. Water and sewer committee.
That's me again. All right, the water and sewer committee met on Thursday, November fourth at two thirty. I'm in attendance, myself and Mr. Atkins, and Mr. Ut, Ms. Richardson, Ms. Harvey, and Mr. Lovins. First item that we discussed was sewer collections and past due accounts. The county staff has done a deep dive into the internal review of past due utility accounts and have found there may be some accounts that were inadvertently charged the sewer non-user fee. Mr. Ut reviewed some of the accounts with the committee based on this discussion. The committee made the following motion. Mr. Atkins made a motion to recommend to credit accounts that were inadvertently billed for county sewer non-user fees following a full review by county administration, and I seconded that motion. So that is a committee recommendation.
Alrighty, any discussion? And what we're talking about here is we have some people who are three, four hundred feet or further away from the sewer line, and we're charging for sewer service, even though they've never looked on. And, you know, our law says two hundred and fifty feet or less. So having looked at that, we felt like it's, you know, it's something we can't enforce, so that's what we're looking, and we want to look at some other issues too, but this is the top of it, we want to get it.
How do you ever get billed to start with?
They filled out an application.
You know, when you go, when they put the line in and you fill out that, where you pay fifty dollars that you're going to hook on instead of paying the astronomical amount? They took those applications and then made an accountant start charging them, which they shouldn't have because they didn't connect. So, well.
So we're clearing that out.
Yes, and we're clearing up a whole, a whole lot more.
We need to make sure in the future that don't happen.
Right.
We've talked to our administrator.
Yeah.
That pays up, that pays up.
Yes. Alright, so we, we voted on that, correct? Or was that our discussion?
No, we, that was our discussion. Any more discussion on that? All those in favor saying five, say aye? Aye. Any opposed likewise? Okay, that passed.
All right, the next item we discussed was the water study, RFP review. The county received proposals from six engineering firms for the countywide water study. Mr. Ut requested feedback from the committee and reviewed the ranking and the interview process. Upon discussion, Mr. Atkins made a motion to recommend stack to work through the ranking and interview process with county wide water study request proposal with feedback from committee members. Ravelry District Supervisor Lori Deal seconded the motion, it was unanimously approved.
Alright, any discussion on that?
I just want to clarify. When it says committee members, that's Mr. Stevenson. I said when I said committee members.
If you'd been there, I would have asked.
Hey, I tried, I tried to put, put your name right there, that you had to review it, so.
Who we had on the, on Smith-With connection, did that ever get studied and moved into this?
We, we finally have a break from With County and the Town of Royal Retreat, and I was told that we were supposed to get the PER. We should have gotten it several months ago. I was told that we were supposed to get the PER this Friday, so hopefully that, that actually, that happens.
That's only one. Sorry. I wasn't there, I should have been there and asked.
But actually, Lori and I are sort of following back on you, your expertise with water lines and hoping that you look at the, at these and give us your feedback on that, if at all possible.
I would.
Okay. Alrighty, having said that, call for the vote on that. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed likewise? Sounds like that was unanimous.
That was, the only two items we discussed, we adjourned at three sixteen.
Okey-dokey. Now we're moving on to a recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding proposed voting amendment related to the airports.
Uh, we, the additional item that we added to the agenda for the ARPA committee report.
Oh, that was ten, okay.
Yeah, ten six. You have a copy of the, the draft minutes, I guess it was from last night's initial committee meeting. I just wanted to make sure everybody has, sees a copy of that. They had a, what I understand was a very fruitful conversation and basically got a lot of direction and feedback. And the next meeting will be December second at four o'clock. I think he's, I'm, I'm pleased and I appreciate everybody who made the appointments. It, it sounds like it's going to be a really active committee that, that is going to take the, take their, their charge and run with it. Do you want me to read the minutes for you, or?
Can we move past all that?
Eventually, basically what they want to do is they'll review all the, all the requests and they'll make recommendations.
Yeah, I'm good with all that.
But they don't have any recommendations yet.
Yeah, I see. You said you wanted to read the minutes, I said, can we move past all that?
I'm looking if I have them yet.
It's over here under your visit Smith County, I'm just a port.
Got it. There we go. I attended the meeting, but I wanted to, okay. We have nothing to vote on other than, I will say as a member who attended the, we've done, in my opinion, we've done a good job of picking people who are willing to speak up, express their opinions, even if they're wrong, that being me, and, because it gets it out there. That's the way we're going to make, and I will, the other thing I'll say is it seemed to be consensus of the room that we want this money to be spent for generational projects, projects that's going to help down the road and not just, as I put it, not just things that can be paid out of the regular budget. And we seem to be in complete agreement on that. And so we're moving forward, we're going to meet again in early December and keep it moving forward. Anybody have any specific questions that I might be able to answer on that? Hearing none, we'll move on then. New business. Resolution for the enterprise zone amendment from Washington County.
We didn't do the airport.
Well, they just pulled them away from it.
We're getting you all messed up.
All right, let's do the airport now.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding the proposed zone amendment for the airport.
You have a, a copy, a memo from Mr. Williams from the Planning Commission recommendation, basically unanimously recommending, recommending the proposed definition for airports as well as allowing them as special use permits in the agricultural, agricultural rural residence, rural district, the residential district, commercial district, and industrial district, again as special exceptions. So that's a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
I accept the Planning Commission recommendation.
Second.
Okay, any motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries. Now, may I move to item eleven, new business?
Please. So we have a request from Washington County. We're a part of a joint enterprise zone with Washington County, Smith County, Glade Spring, and Chilhawee. A piece of property that is actually in Washington, now, let me back up. Each of the four localities are afforded a set number of acres to be designated an enterprise zone. Somehow along the way, a portion of Washington County's designation included eighteen acres or so that's in Smith County instead of Washington County. This happened eight or ten years ago or, or longer. They just never corrected it. Now there's a request by the Town of Abington to, to have some more enterprise zone in the town's proper. So they're basically taking this one piece of property, which includes eighteen acres of, in Smith County, but the majority of it's in Washington County, removing it from the enterprise zone and, and put it in in Abington. We have to pass a resolution, as does the Town of Chilhawee and Town of Glade Spring, just because we're a joint applicant. So basically, the only thing it does to us is if we had a desire to amend our, our zone between now and December thirty-first, we wouldn't be allowed to do it because it's, you can only do one zone amendment each year. We don't have that expectation or, or plans yet, so it's, it's, there's nothing against, nothing detrimental for the, the county. So I recommend the, the resolution as presented.
Is that a count once per calendar year or physical year?
Calendar year. So January first, the reset button is pressed. So we could change it, we can do an amendment January first.
Good thing to do it now and use up our one for this year.
Correct.
Okay. We have more than just two enterprise zones, don't we?
We do. We have, we have the, that joint zone. We also have the Saltville-Smith zone that is, is another joint zone.
Okay, I know, I live in the enterprise zone.
I'm sorry?
I live in the enterprise zone.
That's a sub-zone if one of the other ones.
Okay. Because y'all won't let me build back there for ten minutes. Oh, man. Alright, so we need to, we, if you look at your attached with sixteen or fifteen is a resolution we need to adopt. Do I have a motion that we had adopted?
We need to adopt.
Alright, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed likewise? Sounds like we got it. Resolution regarding the Virginia opioid abatement fund and settlements.
I will start, and I want to lean on Mr. Farthing for further conversations, but we have two draft resolutions in your packet related to the opioid settlements. However, we may need to push the pause button on the two that are in the packet depending on.
Should be the same, the same form, I think.
Okay. Do you want to do a, a quick synopsis of?
I can't, yes. So the state of Virginia and I guess some other states has reached a settlement with four drug companies or one drug company and some suppliers or distributors, I guess, of the opioid case. I sent you an email today that came from our council that is representing us in the litigation. It's kind of lengthy, but it does provide good information. We have to decide by January second whether we're going to opt in to the Virginia settlement. So the Virginia settlement involves these four companies paying a large amount of money to the states. The more counties or localities that join in the settlement, the more money Virginia gets. If some opt out, then that county stands alone with any kind of action that it may have against the drug company itself. The allocation of the money is done based on population and opioid effect, I guess. What, how have we been affected by the opioid problem? And Smith County is, has had a larger effect than other counties of our size to some extent, as well as you filing a lawsuit against the companies also helps you on that allocation. So whatever the formula is, if you were actually a plaintiff in a lawsuit and if you had more effect in your community from the opioid issues, then the way the numbers flow, you get a higher number. And that was explained in the email today, if you get a chance to read. This only involves these four companies. Two of the drug companies have filed bankruptcy and it's still waiting to see how that allocation will be from those two companies of some kind of global settlement with all the plaintiffs. So there would still be additional funds that come from those two bankruptcy cases, maybe if there's money there. And then I think the email today said there's additional companies that are still out there that they may get some other additional settlement from. But the state of Virginia has this large settlement right now, and they have, so the two resolutions are that we agree to participate in the Virginia settlement and that we agree to the memorandum of understanding, or memorandum of settlement.
Of settlement.
Yeah. And then authorize someone from the county to execute those agreements. So that's what the two memorandums are. Our local council, Eric Barton is the lead attorney there. He's in the Midwest, I forget what state he's in. He's the one that sent the email today describing their recommendations to go along with this. He said there has been some cases tried and some cases won and some cases lost. One case that just recently, he said recently got appealed and just lost, I think it was in Oklahoma. So they won the first level, then they appealed it, and then they lost on the appeal based on the court's interpretation of whatever state they were in, their state law. So he recommends it, and then you get a piece of the pie. Virginia has passed legislation that all this money goes into an opioid, I can't remember what they're calling it, abatement fund or whatever. And seminar that Lisa and I attended tried to explain that a little bit, that I think, if I remember correctly, fifteen percent of the monies that we get are, we use however we want. Fifteen percent is used for opioid abatement for us, which can be used to reimburse from prior expenses, I think. But it's pretty broad of how we use the abatement. And I'm not, I don't remember the other percentage, but I think it was still opioid abatement stuff, so. Recommendation from our council, who is representing us in the class action lawsuit on the opioid issues, recommends that we follow the Virginia settlement and opt in. You don't have to decide this tonight if you don't want to, if you want time to read his email. There's a website link in the email I sent you if you want to read more about it. um, there's a website link in the email I sent you if you wanna read more about it. Um, we can pass it. Um, we have until, really, the end of December to pass the resolutions. So, if you wanna pass it to December, you can do that. It'll give you time to look at it more, if you want.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make two, two notes. Kind of the way this authority works, similar to the Tobacco Commission. Um, so this is something I highly recommend that we move forward with. And the other thing, uh, the chairman of the abatement authority is Senator Todd Pillion. So, we actually have somebody from Southwest Virginia chairing this committee. And obviously, everybody in this room knows how the opioids have affected our community. And I think we need to get back on what we can.
How does our other lawsuit play into this, uh, when we went with that group? Ben Chafin and that group?
Yeah, that's who's making the recommendation that we opt in, right? So, that's the group. And that I was pestering a little bit, saying, "Give me your rec- what's your recommendation? You're our counsel here. What's our recommendation on this deal?", right? Uh, and he responded and said, "We recommend..." Now, he sent an email in September, said this was sort of coming and said, "We think we're gonna recommend it. We'll give you more information later", and he, it never came, right, until yesterday. Uh, so, um, they're, they're on board with it. Um, they also have these two bankruptcy cases going on that we may get additional funds from if there's some kind of settlement out of those. And then, in his email today, there's other companies out there, there are defendants that we may have a claim for that may create some future settlement, maybe not, but there are other defendants out there. Now, how they get paid, I have no idea, right? Uh, I imagine they get a cut out of the settlement because the represented parties or the, the parties that have filed suit get a little bit bigger piece of the money because their suit pressured the drug companies into some sort of action, so...
Mr. Chairman, I just, for clarification. So, does that mean that Campbell and Associates will get a part of this twenty-six whatever also?
I don't know what the fee arrangement is. The, the... My understanding is we hired Wagstaff Law Firm, uh, which is the Midwest group, um, with, um, the experience in the class action lawsuit. They're the one taking the lead on this thing. And then Ben Chafin, Jeff Campbell, and a lady out of Abingdon, I think, was the, the local group here uh, that brought in the Wagstaff group from the Midwest and went around, you know, signing people up. So, I'm not sure what the actual fee agreement is. I've not seen that in a long time, but, um, yes.
So, that is still part of it?
They're, they're participating as attorneys, um, of record, so I'm not sure how they share this fees, yeah. Yes, yep.
I'll move to... Make the resolutions.
There's two resolutions, yeah. Resolution authorized, you give a sign.
It authorizes you to sign.
Authorizes me to sign. I'm not sure that's a good idea. I like Sean at signing stuff and sending it.
Motion to move forward, aye? Can we have a second?
So, a motion to adopt both resolutions to opt in to the Virginia settlement?
Yes.
Okay. And authorize county attorney to sign, uh, memorandum or other documents, okay?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye?
Thank you.
Ayes opposed. I just think it would be good to read it and know a little more about it. Better stop it. All right, we're gonna lay a seat.
Working the way through.
Local performance agreement between Smith County, Smith County EDA, and Woodgrain Mill Works LLC.
So, you may remember here a few months ago, we had a great announcement for, um, Woodgrain, uh, expanding their operation, taking over the Coffin, um, Mills building and, and doing quite a bit of an investment and new hiring. Um, part of that project was a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar incentive from the Agricultural, Forestry, Industrial Development Fund, AFID. Um, so, we have a draft performance agreement that's been presented, uh, three, three-party agreement that pretty much, the, 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 the general aspect of the performance agreement is the company signing up, committing to make X, Y, and Z investments and ABC employment opportunities available. And if they don't, then there's a clawback. Um, and we have a, a legal process that's spelled out in this. We don't expect that, but you never know. Uh, so I would like to recommend the, the board, uh, approve the performance agreement and authorize me to execute on the county's behalf.
So, move.
Second. Have a motion in second to approve this performance agreement. Any, uh, discussion?
I just wanna make a comment. If you all hear anybody saying that those Coffin buildings are still empty, you can tell them no, they're not. Some of them are bridges in one, and the Woodgrain is now the other.
And they're actually looking at using the keels too, so, uh, um, and that's good.
Yep.
Any other discussion, comments? And I'm, I'm, I'm tickled for Woodgrain, the fact that Blake Grun, and, you know, the, the plant over in Grayson County is such an economic development area. You know, we, we gotta work together in this. That's working together.
Yep.
It really is. Although, um, I guess, is there any? We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it's passed. Does anybody else need to take a break before we get to a chance to get back?
Okay.
Let's take a five-minute break. Be back in here about twenty-two.
Ten point three, ten point two. Big fund, uh, radical journal, big fund used for coffee. So, probably the biggest program.
Be good to us in the newspaper, be good to us. All right. All righty, now we're ready to go with eleven D. Interagency agreement with the town of Sawville for Cardwell Water Town Water Main Replacement Project.
Okay, sir. Uh, so, um, the town of Sawville, they have a six-million-dollar-plus, um, reinvestment plan that they're doing for their water line, water system. Part of that is trying to find as much as they can of grant money. They have a, um, a grant application in the works for their Cardwell Town, um, water system. However, it's entirely outside of the town limits. So, the State Department of the Housing and Community Development won't allow the town to be the applicant. But the town is committed to doing all the work. So, what we have is a, an interagency agreement that DHD put together that pretty much says the county will be the applicant, the county will receive the funds, and will work with the town, but the town will be responsible for managing the project and, um, all the expectations and requirements thereof. I'll also assign, uh, uh, staff to, to help oversee, just to make sure things are okay. But, um, the, the, there's a few blanks in here, uh, that you'll notice. In, in particular, the, uh, specific amount, uh, that's to be applied for. Um, DHD has three levels, uh, seven-hundred-thousand-dollar, one million, and one-point-two-five-million, uh, depending on what else is involved in the project. That part hasn't been ironed out. They may be eligible for as much as a million-dollar grant, which will more than do, um, the, uh, the, the project, uh, with no match requirement. So, what I'd like to ask, uh, is, um, uh, recommendation to, um, execute the agreement up to one-point-two-five-billion-dollar grant application. I think that's the safest way to, to, to word the, the recommendation.
Most of this point, we're just approving the application.
We're approving the ability to apply.
Okay.
To apply on behalf of the town of Sawville.
And we can negotiate our fees later.
All right, right. Uh, it's, it, they will be, um, considered our lines until the project's completed because it's going through us. But at the end of the project, we'll sign it over to the town for their ongoing maintenance and operation.
Well, we need to be fine with these grants for our actions?
Well, we do have some, that, that part of that, see, Sawville is a step ahead of us. They have the, this count, the county or the town-wide plan for this is where our issues are and this is what we wanna replace. So, they're a step ahead of us. That's the RFP that we've just, um, we're working on finishing up will put us on that place. So, this time next year, we'll be applying for the same grant.
We don't need a RFP to replace an eighty-year-old water line.
The state won't.
We need to get an engineer, get that designed and apply for a grant while this grant money's out here and get it done.
There's a lot.
Some of the system in the county, I mean...
There's a lot coming, a lot of grant money coming.
The box is me to figure out which ones you need to replace, so, it needs to go. You ought to be big time behind that.
Yeah.
Yep.
We missed these grants the last time around when all these new systems come in, simply because we didn't end up applying for them.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm getting away from what we're discussing, but now's a good time to discuss it. We need to get on these.
I agree.
And that's why I have those studies and everything in place ahead of time, so we can submit it with our application being proactive instead of reactive, 'cause it's out and stuff and we're not prepared.
That's what scores us, being able to say that, "Hey, we have a plan, and this is what we're gonna do first, and this is what we're gonna do second."
We might need to steer them people that's gonna do this down the road the right direction to get the ones we needed gone.
Absolutely.
'Cause this money's gonna be gone.
We have a good idea of what those top four or five priorities are. We just need to, uh, study an independent study that says that, in essence. And that's what this was.
Let's write, let's write, sign off on it and move forward.
Yep.
It don't really matter who it is, as long as we just do it, so we got some kind of document. I'll make a motion to approve this, to apply for the one-point-two-milli...
One-point-two, whatever the number is.
Up to one-point-two-five.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, and all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? All right. Next class. We're up to an important part now, a report from the county attorney.
Sorry, ma'am. Uh, we had, so we had two agreements in the packet, Kendra just reminded me, for the Woodgrain. That was the performance agreement for AFID and a local performance agreement that I'd like to...
We approved nineteen. I guess we need to do twenty?
Now, do you need a motion to approve both?
Separate motion. Approve the local performance agreement agreement?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, all those in... Uh, any discussion? This is on the Woodgrain. Now, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Motion passes. And I apologize once again, I just...
That's okay. Mr. Stevens said he'd give me a tip if I stayed short today, so...
A tip? You don't like my tip.
I don't really have much to report. I've got a lot of plates spinning, um, you know, um, Churchland Drive and Riverside, I've got a follow-up on service on those. Um, Ad Wolf, Quail Run, I've gotta get those filed. Um, uh, we're working on a couple ordinances, um, questions? I'm moving forward, it's just not really fast, so...
I'm getting hung. I need to get Riverside served.
I understand, yeah.
I need a safety.
Yeah, yeah. We gotta figure out how to serve her, she's hiding, so...
I'm gonna buy a, a boy light and put it on top of my car and just start arresting people on the road.
Citizens arrest like Barney Pott.
Yes, exactly.
Is NASCAR just sitting there or whatever that group's called now, or...
Yeah, they're, it's inactive at the moment. I need to stir them up a little bit, so... Jericho, yeah.
We gotta blow our truck if they want.
I need to go file a motion to make him produce some information, so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Doing good, y'all.
Thank you.
Good?
George, I'm afraid to say I might be in the wrong place.
I'll be... I'll be very quick, uh, I won't be as quick as Scott, but I'll be, um, quick. I have five quick things. So, um, we do have, uh, heard recent, earlier this week that, uh, the Commonwealth Attorney has received some, uh, seizure funds that they'd like to, to spend. They actually already have the expenditure ready. So, um, they asked that we appropriate two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy dollars to fund seven-sixty for that.
Let me do a prayer. Second.
No motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Okay.
Okay, and item two, um... Okay, and item two, um just want to remind everybody, we have the employee luncheon scheduled for December third. Um at the former W N L hangar out in Chill Howie. Um the easiest way to get there is if you go to the transfer station, go up the hill, pass the transfer station and keep going. It curls around to the to the hangar building itself. Um we are up to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty R S V Ps.
Well, with Fox Lunches, it's about one eighty-six.
Right, so yeah, one eighty-six, so I'm I'm ecstatic that we have this kind of turnout, so I'm I'd I'd love to get as many board members there as as we can. And we won't require you to do anything, you don't have to worry about serving or 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 doing anything, so just come and enjoy a a good lunch.
When is it?
December third, Friday, December third.
We have a cornhole tournament for Lori or somebody.
I'll be at Quail Ridge. I would be there that day.
Um part of the thing, one of the things I want to do there is we have a um an employee that's res- retiring, been here for over thirty-eight years. Uh Mr. Burgess said in the water department, uh so I have in that packet there a draft resolution uh of appreciation. That I would love to be able to present to him at the luncheon. Um he's pretty much retired now, uh but he'll be there at the luncheon and I I'd love to be able to to give him uh uh some kudos in front of his fellow employees. So I'd like to recommend that.
Move to approve. Okay, motion to second. Um I don't know, this Kirby we're talking about.
I had to think hard about it.
As I feel so, it's white.
And he's watching, so let's turn him down the door.
Yeah, he'll tell me about it tomorrow.
He's just, he's cussing right there.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Any opposed likewise? We ruined his day for him.
What time is it?
Uh twelve noon, on the third.
Twenty.
Uh fresh turkey, ham and all the fixings.
Oh, really?
Can't get drunk at twelve noon, I don't care.
Why not?
We'll only have sweet tea, lemonade and coffee for our county funds.
You want something?
Talk, let's talk after the meeting.
Yeah, I could, I'll take that.
Uh another item that I think is pretty important, um last year, you remember, we did a Christmas bonus for the employees and it was, it was kind of a surprise to the employees, they didn't expect it. Uh we did a five hundred dollar bonus for full time and two hundred fifty for um part time. Uh last year's bonus, that cost just over eighty-three thousand dollars. We made the um the employees whole, basically, I think it was five hundred and forty dollars for each employee and we basi- and they they end up getting five hundred because we paid the taxes for them. Uh and same for for the um the part timers. Uh this year, the comp board is paying the uh law enforcement deputies, the Leo's, uh three thousand dollar bonus from the comp board. So that's thirty employees that uh we would not have to um add to our group. Uh so if we were to come do exactly what we did last year, the five hundred and two fifty, uh that would be a seventy-one thousand dollar, seventy-one, two hundred. Um spread out over the entire budget like we did last year, we can absorb, I feel confident we can absorb those those costs. And I'd like to recommend that we do that for the um the paycheck that comes out the end of November.
I'm going to approve, it's getting close to Christmas, let's get a little spirit, even I get a little Christmas spirit.
Phil, look at you. I'm going to, I have a question really quick before Phil changes his mind. On this uh three thousand dollar bonus for the law enforcement officers from the comp board.
Yes.
I know some of the uniformed officers are county employees. And I don't think it's fair to give three thousand dollars to the comp board uniformed employees and not the county uniformed employees. So would we be giving them the three thousand and then the rest of the employees?
Right now, the the only ones that would get the 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 three thousand, eh eh the based on what I'd recommended following what we did last year, would would only be those thirty comp board. There's um the S R Os uh and the um the the part timers at the courthouse are are not comp board employees.
So the on the deputies on the road, do you have deputies on the road, does that cover all of them?
I'm ninety-nine percent sure all all deputies are comp board employees. Um I can verify that.
But keep in mind, the comp board position may be held by, the comp board position may be held by one, but the one serving in the school is not the one getting the comp board pay.
Right, that's why.
So you gotta, you know, you gotta.
Interesting, yeah, yeah, I do not have that answer. I can have that answer for um next week's meeting if you like. Um the concern is it's going to be pretty tight on um payroll because of Thanksgiving and and the way the um the automatic payments come in.
If we move forward with this motion, if we find that there are deputies that were not included.
I guarantee you they are.
Then we can come back next week and change that, I mean, if if like I can speak.
I don't know.
Please.
Yeah, and there are um S R Os that are not in the school, so they're paid an S R O salary, but they're not in the schools.
They're out on the road.
Yeah, comp board funded employees who are actually S R Os in inside the schools. I can have a list of those employees so you can have a figure of that in. I just want to be fair, you know, if it's one thing on paper and something else in real life, that's, I want to be fair about it.
So we have fourteen S R Os.
How many S R Os?
Um so that would be fourteen times twenty-four.
So what, you wanting to give them the five hundred dollars we're giving everybody else or the three thousand?
The three thousand.
I don't think it's unfair to other county employees just because they're wearing their head for them. I I I get what you're saying, they all get the same thing the comp board does, but the same old guy down here in the ditch, we're giving five hundred dollars, they're the same secretary, I'm willing to give them five hundred dollars. I I think it's unfair to, you're making it unfair at your state. Your argument is unfair that the comp didn't give them, we ought to make up the difference, but you can use the same argument to say we give them three thousand, but we didn't give our other county employees three thousand. You following my argument?
Uh absolutely, but but based on when they were hired, would depend on if they're comp or not. The f- my point is, if somebody puts a uniform on every day, just like your son does, and they go out and protect their community, they need to be treated equally. And I'm for giving them three thousand dollars because sometimes they don't know if they're going home to their family and not.
Well, I'm not arguing that in one bit, I'm just saying when you come down to making it fair, I think he deserved more than three thousand dollars. They they deserve a hundred thousand dollars a year or whatever, but when you come down and say, that's being fair, then. The county employees, if you're going to designate them as county employees and I don't like giving somebody a thousand dollars and somebody else two hundred dollars.
Right.
The uh.
I see that, but I I s- I still feel like.
If we give your, if we do what you're talking about, then it's going to take away from our fund money to to the other people, right?
Well, the it would cost that, and it uh if we had those fourteen, it'd be a an additional thirty-five thousand dollar cost.
But you're still not clear on, i- is it just those fourteen S R Os that we're talking about?
Yeah, the 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 rest of the employ- rest of the um deputies are are part timers, the courthouse security.
I've got dispatch.
Dispatch is not a, they're not a comp, they're in- included in the comp. The comp board.
Neither is the administration, so there's there's a couple administration employees who work for the sheriff's department that are not included.
Well, most of your part time employees are already retired somewhere, getting more benefits and stuff and, you know, I don't mind having a joy of Christmas, but I don't want to go overboard in it. I'm in more supportive law enforcement because it's in the blood of anybody, but my, and just arguing, we keep discussing. I don't know, I'm for the five hundred dollars, even if we need to give them five hundred dollars, I'm their p- their county employee for not getting comp. But that's kind of where I end at.
Do the uh, I hear some of the dispatchers, I know a lot of those are part time.
So the part timers would get to two fifty and the full timers would get to five hundred.
And and based, I'm just, I'm just being clear on how this is going to go down. So some of the law enforcement officers are going to get three thousand dollars from the comp board and some of them are only going to get five hundred. Tell me how that's fair, that's, I just want that cl- I just want that clarified.
Well, I didn't, I ain't, I ain't saying it's fair, I'm just saying if we're going to do it for county employees, then a county employee ought to get county employees. I I, you know, that comp board thing uh goes back to part time law enforcement, there's a lot of that comp board unfair. And Charlie brought up one thing, for instance, I never did agree with. And and it makes no difference to me because I'm not involved in the sheriff's department. A lot of them comp boys, they ain't worried out there on the front line. They may be uh as a uh a school officer or whatever, so I I don't agree with a lot of comp board things anyway, but I get your argument. And I'm not saying you're wrong, but I'm saying if we're going to give taxpayer money away and we're going to give it to county employees a five hundred dollar bonus or Christmas bonus, let's give it to them five hundred dollars. If we move the three thousand and give it to the deputies and we only give five hundred dollars, we've done the same thing the comp board does, in my opinion. Everybody's entitled to it.
Sure, I see your point, I respect it, I just, I can't agree with it unless you're going to be fair.
Them boys that ain't on the comp deserve the same benefits as they.
Yeah.
But I can't correct every problem the comp board and everybody's done wrong up in state reg.
Right.
And this is a bad statement to say, but it's the truth. They know, in other words, we have that road deputy out there that on our books are a are a school resource officer at that low pay. But they know that they're tech collecting that pay and they're out on the road. And they they know, they know there's a problem there, but they're, at least they have a job. And and that's the way I used to look at it. Because we we're not, we're not going to hire them as a school resource officer and put them in the school. We're going to hire them as school resource officer pay and then they're going to go out and be a road deputy. We're going to put someone else with more experience in the school to handle that.
I think I'd all, I agree with you, and I think I'd all fall as under the sheriff, and and you know that it's a shame they all don't follow the comp board. But unfortunately, it is what it is.
Yep.
But when it comes down, and I get what you're saying, I get it. But if you're going to call it fair, then it's no more fair to the employees of Smith County than it is to the deputies. I mean, you, somebody's going to lose. I, you know.
I respect that, but you know, Kendra, I mean, I just saw you, you're, I'm going to use an example, not picking on you, but what she does every day, she doesn't put her life on the line for the county.
You're not going to get no argument out of me on that.
That's the difference for me, and I I just.
But we're getting, we're talking bonuses, i- if that's true, we ought to be talking salaries and say, hey, these people don't make near what they make, we're talking about a Christmas bonus. I, if I, if if I got, if I'm going to give somebody a gift, I'm going to wrap it and everybody's going to get the same amount of gift, that's how I do Christmas.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Lori, I totally see what you're saying and I agree, I think we're really lucky to have such dedicated lawmakers now. I also agree though, that I I feel like we need to support what Sean has recommended based on budget.
It follows, yeah, eh one, one, I guess a uh option could be if if the seven forty-four fund is is actually two hundred thousand instead of one hundred thousand. You could look at that thirty-five thousand coming from seven forty-four instead of the general fund, but um that's.
Sheriff's got to approve that though.
Right.
Well, eh I mean, is there not some way that that could come out of his budget somehow, I just, it needs to be fair.
That's just what I ask of me here, I wonder if there was, he has any way to adjust it.
He had a few um a few openings um that that took a few months to get filled and there's, yeah, there were three in the dispatcher that, did we fill one or two of them?
We're, we're trying.
Close, yeah, so we've got, there's three in the dispatcher that's not um filled yet.
Well, if the sheriff wanted to come back in front of us and ask for that money out of his budget, then I'll vote for it.
I think we need to, we need to make that as a separate motion tonight because we got, we got to get it done so we can get into the payroll process.
I I I'm, I'm making a motion, right now we moved to to give the five hundred something dollars if you'd ask for the county employees. And you know, if if the sheriff wants to come, then I'll support you on that on out of here, but I don't want it in this motion as far as I'm making.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
I can reach out.
With the brisk money, isn't there some leeway there that that some of that can be used? I know with education, is that right?
Well, depends on how it's tied.
Mm-hmm.
Like if it's tied to COVID.
Uh-huh.
So is there more, if it's not, then we can't use it.
They've certainly been more under burdened with COVID, I mean, I don't know.
The the cares.
There might be an obvious.
The cares type funds were, had a lot more openings for um for bonuses for essential employees than the ARPA money. The ARPA money's um a little tighter, uh more restrictive.
What about the radar fund?
That's what I'm, yeah, the seven forty-four.
You know, the sheriff ought to be willing to to ask to do that, and I'm all for it.
I think we did, we we've got two motions on the floor right now, which we shouldn't have, but we do. Uh uh I I think what we need to do is just remove both motions and make a motion that we have, and this is me now talking. Make a motion that we approve the five hundred for our employees. Also approve approve a minimum of five hundred to the sheriffs that don't get the three thousand. With the understanding in that motion that the sheriff wants to make up the difference out of his seven forty-four fund, we will approve that also, that is also approved.
I'll make that motion, I'll be in my motion to say that.
That's great.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, if it comes out of the sheriff's seven forty-four.
And that way, if he says yes, then you can move forward with payroll.
And I'll second that.
Yeah, we we don't have to do anything, I mean, if we want to be scrupulous, we we don't have to do anything, so.
I think anything the employees will be happy for, appreciate it.
I'd like to do it like we did last time and have it not show up and in that way.
Very effort.
It shows up in the paycheck and and for the public in the room that don't know, we had a lot of employees, when we did that last year in November, a lot of employees called us and said.
Yes.
My paycheck's too much.
You messed up.
Yeah, I mean, I I love the fact that they called and said, my paycheck's too much. I mean, I get a paycheck, I cash and go home.
Well, Christmas is a hard time on here, but it takes care of the employees.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion?
Can I clarify that the motion includes if he's ha- if he's supportive of the seven forty-four, we don't have to come back, that's automatic?
If he, if he, if he'll take it out of the seven forty-seven fund and not come back.
Seven forty-four.
Two weeks from, whatever, and say, look, I need fourteen thousand dollars, I'm short here, if he does that, that's, but now if he wants to do it, that's my motion.
Okay, thank you, I'm good with that.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like we've worked a deal there.
Yes, I, one last thing for you, um a lot of things happened this week. Uh the other, the last thing that happened was we were notified from the sheriff's office that two drug seizure vehicles have been released for sale. Um kind of referring back to what Mr. Call was talking about earlier, these were not included on the surplus committee's recommendation because we didn't have a formal um uh release from the sheriff's office. Um it's a, you have pop- uh pictures there, there's a, an older Tahoe that was a a um seizure and a um Silverado. You can see the Silverado's been, it's been in that parking lot for many, many years. Um Tahoe, not as long, but we're trying to clean up the parking lot, so I'd like to recommend that those be added to the surplus list for sale. We cannot give these away, these actually have to be sold and the proceeds go to a specific fund.
That's a pretty good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Have a motion to second, any discussion? Do you know, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it passed. We're up to supervisory time. Um who wants, anybody in particular want to start?
I will.
Okay, go ahead.
God bless everybody, let's go on. Yeah, that's my pardon, I think attorney got a lot there he does. Dog's going to bite me when I go home.
Okay, Lori?
I just want to say tomorrow's Veterans Day, so I'd like to express my gratitude to our veterans and their families for their sacrifice to protect our freedoms and this country. And thank you all for good discussion and working together.
Judy?
I I second that, I think we do have a lot to be thankful for for the freedoms of our country. And I always appreciate your support and kind of reminding us that our constitution and and our government and the rights and privileges that we have in this country. But that's your fault and I apologize for it, so.
Do you want to bring Rascal, get one more thing?
Go for it, you got close there. All right, I have, just Veterans Day tomorrow, and as a veteran, I thank you, and uh it means a lot, it really does. Um I enjoyed the good conversation and the interaction we're having now, I think, I don't know if y'all are getting, but the citizens are telling me that they're happy that they can see the county moving forward. And I hope you're getting the same reports I'm getting because I I just, that's what we're here for, is to help the citizens and help this county grow and move forward, and I think we're doing that, so. Um having said that, we'll go to the, I guess we got a uh. Closed session, of course.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into closed session under Code of Virginia Section two point two dash three seven one one A eight. Consultation of legal counsel, employee or attain by public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, and this is in regards to volunteer firefighter requirements.
I would like to make add to that, that we leave Mr. Widener, Mr. Crawford in the room with us. Sit back down. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? All right, thank you.